I mean, there might be a confirmation that prints out, but I mean, it should have, yeah.
It should have been here by now when I got it.
I tried to date stamp everything down the bottom left corner.
Oh, you did, didn't you? I didn't see that. No, thank you. That's okay.
If you ever, now, I can't guarantee I've hit everything though, so.
Nope, that's great. You know what? You do do that a lot in the time that you do it.
We work with so many versions of things that if I don't do that, I'll never know which version I'm looking at.
I do that at work too, because I have a lot of documents that I bring up. And so every now, I know, okay, I did update this. So, yeah, I'll just put my, you know, because that way my file will.
Yeah.
But no, you're, they're all date stamps as well as you go.
And we can go ahead and start if you want to start.
Okay. Officially, starting? Call order.
Well, okay. Yeah, we can walk through this. The first page is basically what you've seen before. The state revenue with the governor's proposed budget. The rest, other than the CARES funding we know we will be losing, shows the different federal miscellaneous transfers. We know we're going to lose that 300,000. And then, just for illustrative purposes, the county appropriation is level funded. If all of this were to play out the way it's portrayed here, we would actually end up with 204,491 dollars less to work with next year than we have this year. Realizing there are some costs in there that, that can, that are dependent upon the revenue, which is disappearing. So, we'll have, you know, make decisions on those instructional coaches, going from the 34, or whatever we have now, down to 21, 21, or whatever. So, that's that. If you flip the next page, what we've done is a calculation showing the cost per salary scale, number of people in it. So, we show 472 people on the positions on the teacher salary scale. And you can go on down the column there to see that we're just under 800 total full-time positions that are accounted for in these numbers. As you go across the page, there are the different costs. Although, the first one, in the governor's proposed budget, he has proposed a 1% bonus for employees. So, I went ahead and put the cost of that 1% bonus on it. The only really payroll cost we'll have is the FICA, which is shown there. And then, the other FICA that's next to that is on the total of the contracts in the first column there. And then, the various expenses from the VRS retirement, to disability insurance, to group life, and the different things we have going across the page. And then, the total cost per employee group down to the bottom of the page. And if you look, that's 64,224,021, going against just around $9 million in difference between that and the revenue. So, that would mean if we just kept the existing positions we have, gave everybody a step, gave them a 1% bonus, paid all the associated costs with doing that. I will say, the health insurance has a 10% employer contribution increase. So, that would not hold the employee harmless, but it would mean that if the school board saw a 10% increase in the total premium, it would be shared, the employees would go up 10%, the employers would go up 10%.
And that is definitive? Because I think last time that.
No, I don't think so. I haven't heard of it.
That's just, that's what we're using, the 10%.
That's just, yes, just as an estimate.
And then, where there's like the zero there, those are?
Salary scales.
Okay, well, because that's contracted out. But like, what about transportation mechanic? Career tech specialist?
Okay, there's no career tech specialist. These are, this goes back many years, and we've just sort of, I've left them in there, and I can take them out. But the transportation mechanic is now an automotive, all of those are automotive specialists.
So, this template is just what you've used in the years past?
Used over the years past, yeah. So, if there's a zero there, it means that probably that scale's not being used now.
Or there's not an employee on it.
Yeah.
Not necessarily that we're trying to advertise for one, it's just.
No, no, no.
Okay, gotcha.
And I can take those out if that cleans it up, but.
Does this include any of those VLA reading specialists that we know we have to hire? It's, so those are in here?
This is.
And that's really the only new additional positions that are included in here.
And then, that is just this year's stuff plus those three?
Unless there's something we've added during the year this year.
Like the SSOs?
Yes, those are included. Those are included.
Well, yeah, everything that would have been in this year.
The armed teachers. Those were already being included.
Yeah. So, anything added up to now, plus the three reading specialists.
Gotcha.
And then, the next pages are more for you to look at if you care at your leisure, I think. But it lists like grade one, all the positions, what the salaries would be with a step increase next year.
And the 1%?
No, the 1% is not included there. This is just a step. This is what their contract would read. And then, if the 1% were approved in the final analysis, then that would be done in addition to this. But it is calculated in the cost. And I think, let's see here. Yeah, if you go over to page four of grade one, and come halfway down in the red, we've got those three vacant positions. And those are to backfill the three teachers that will be the VLA reading specialist. We said whoever comes in their place, we're just estimating they'll have 10 years' experience. They may have more, they may have less. But for budgeting, that's just what we did. And we can always change that if you feel that's unreasonable, or too high, or too low.
But actually, we know who these teachers are.
Well, we don't. See, here's the thing. We've budgeted for each of those three people elsewhere in here. So, they're, they're already in there.
Okay.
But whoever comes into those classrooms to replace them, we don't know who they are.
I gotcha.
Right, right, right. I'm saying for this, for this, we could actually put the years of experience that these people have in the reading specialist.
Well, they're already getting credited for that experience.
I hear what you're saying, yeah. I hear what you're saying.
And two of them are Hilda Barber, one of them is AS Rhodes, so.
You couldn't necessarily take where they are and put that on a whole?
No, because, yeah.
I gotcha. Yep, that makes sense.
So, those are those. And you can look through them if you have any questions or whatever. But again, it's all the same philosophy.
So, these are, so grade one step, or these are everybody that's one grade, one step?
Grade one step, yes.
Grade two?
Including any vacancies that may exist as of this moment.
Grade four, and grade one through five are all teachers?
All teachers. From a bachelor's up to a doctorate.
Okay.
On grade five. Grade six are your instructional assistants. Those are all done the same way. There's step increases. And if there's any vacant positions, those have been recognized in there. I'll say.
What does that mean if they're blue on?
Well, I'm, this is all Kendall's work, some of that. I'm, okay, well, I think the blue ones are those.
Student support.
Student support, instructional assistance. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, I think, what that SS, student support. And some of them are in different colors, so I'm not sure exactly. Those are those. And then, we go through the different ones, the administrative assistants, the head secretary, the secretaries, and all the other different grades that make up our total group of employees.
So, basically, all the, from the first or the second page you gave us, the 798, everything's broken down in all these?
In that, yes. So, if you take each of those, and it'll show up. It'll show up on there, yes. That's all.
And we still are remaining the largest employer in Moore County, correct?
I think, I think we've.
Nobody has surpassed us in the last 10 months.
Does this include part-time staff, or is this only full-time?
It does not. Now, so what we do for part-time, if you come over to that summary page, this one here, down at the very bottom, after you go past this number 42, overtime, part-time, yeah, subs that carried over from the past, although it may come back in the future, who knows?
Okay.
And then, we have some costs that I didn't distribute among them, such as the health insurance, that's shown in a lump sum there. It gets distributed, but for a bunch of purpose. The workers' comp, yeah, that's all lump sum, the tuition assistance, and that's everything. So, that's where those, those positions are shown.
And those individuals, sorry, the part-time people are not shown in the 798 either, right? So, we have 798 full-time employees, plus four part-time.
That's just full-time, yes, yeah. Yeah. Want to be at the non-labor now, I mean, that sort of calls it.
Yeah, we can follow through with that.
I'm going to make notes, I'll call it a second. But this is, the 798 reflects only the full-time.
Only full-time contracted.
I know we've asked you this before, and approximately how many? Do you know about how many part-time we might have, or?
Well.
I mean, I know, I think we've talked about that before.
Yeah, I have to look. It's, there's a, there's only about four or five, what I would call, permanent part-time. Well, maybe not. I guess you can consider your cafeteria aides and things like that.
But they're all the dexter, they would all, no, the aides, the inside the cafeteria. Just do a monitoring line, yep, yep, yep.
We have about four or five, what I will call, professional staff, either a part-time teacher, a part-time secretary, some of those positions. But, yeah, and then, the car drivers and stuff, that's sort of a floating number.
Gotcha.
Month to month, or day to day. So, the non-labor is sort of a, not sort of, it's a work in progress right now. So, what you can see is there's, you know, a considerable increase asked over what the current is. Now, that current bottom line there, just under 7 million, 7.1 million to 7,99,000. That's not everything. There are some categories in here that aren't shown. So, it'll be completed.
Well, yeah, I just leave it open for, because it's all immediate, but.
Oh, well, I mean, just the noise.
Yeah.
Just maybe not shut it all away, just that way the noise.
So, that number will grow, but right now, against these different categories, location is shown on the left, we have requests in that 24, 25 proposed budget line that add up to an increase of 3,247,278.
So, can, sorry, can you say that again? So, the first column, the current non-labor budget, this is showing only what has been spent or incurred so far this year?
No, that's, that's what the budget is this year for just these cost centers that are shown.
Okay. What did you mean when you said it's going to grow?
Well, because there's some cost centers that aren't shown.
Gotcha.
The actual total non-labor for this year was 10,988. So, there's almost 3 million sitting out there in things such as utilities, is a good 2 million. I don't think they're going there. So, those are, and we'll, we'll be adding those to it.
And these are basically the budgets that each school has, correct?
Is the budget each school has for non-labor.
This is what they individually audited on and everything that they use in their schools.
And then, the second column is what they've asked for, based on their needs for the few, for next year.
Okay. So, we're missing like electric, you said?
I know the utilities are missing, they're, they're a good 2 million, which gets it up to, yeah.
So, at our last meeting, we saw a list that was like, you know, keypad entries, and cameras for stairwells and stuff. Is that these, or those are separate from this? Those are, those requests are separate from one?
Those were placed, they're separate from this.
Okay.
And backing up a little bit on the labor side, you saw the 40-some positions that were asked for. None of them are included in this cost. So, those would have to be added if we do anything, yeah. And then, the pages that, that represent what the different cost centers and schools presented or attached for you to look at.
Now, last year, we looked at, like, when you were talking about the non-labor, we looked at each school's full non-labor, what they had previously, what they were in, what category, because each of these, they have different categories within their schools. We looked at that too.
Yeah. And when you, right. And when you look through these, and again, this is for you to, to review and to digest, and, you know, as you look through some of those categories that, that did show an increase, like, for instance, well, like technology. When you look at the technology increase, that's for computers, Chromebooks?
This is what this is. It's just in a different format than it had in last year. That's why, okay, sorry. I did, I noticed that now. It's in a different format than we looked at last year. So, this is, for example, I'm going to pick on AS Rhodes, because it's first.
Yeah, yeah.
So, this is, they were at 27,264. This year, they're proposing for their school base with non-labor would be 51,289. And this is where she breaks it down. We can see the, where she wants that to go, and where her increases and potential decreases, okay?
Yes, yes.
It's just that, you guys changed up the format.
Well, this is, this is their format. So, we sent them the document to use, and then, they go in and put their, you know, put everything in, and then, we synthesize that from.
Okay, so these are all.
Because they're, they're giving a little explanation. So, if you look like AS Rhodes, they gave explanation for what they're wanting, and why they're reasoning. Then, if you flip, flip to the next one, you'll see that, you know, it's just taking the categories from the year before, looking at, and there's differences between the year before and from a proposed to, so.
Gotcha, yep.
So, each school kind of, and department does it a little different. But we give them the template to use, but some of them like to add a little more, or to make a little information.
Yeah, this takes a little bit of time to really look through each one and see. I know I had a lot of questions last year about why some of them were making certain choices and whatnot.
So, like with the technology, you know, I think it, what is it with, with Microsoft Office at some point going out?
It's, yeah.
Your computers, obviously.
All those computers that we have that are old, we have to replace those. I think Doug asked for like a half a million dollars or something like that, to replace all of those computers that will be outdated.
You can't even update them.
No, can't.
Yeah, you have to just replace.
Yeah. And when you're using those in your, and, you know, you have a whole room of Blue Ridge Tech that you're running your CAD program on, and, you know, those things have to be updated, and we do need to replace those. Like, for instance, also with transportation, you see, you know, there's an increase of about 843,000 there. You know, Aaron put buses in the, in the budget. You know, I think we've, we've emptied out our bus fund down there, I do believe. Is that right, Rob? I don't think.
Yeah, there's not much left.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough in there to buy a bus. And, you know, as our carryover, so like, for instance, with this audit from last year, remember, we have to replace the 700,000 dollars that was pulled out of our capital improvement and put into our operation. And so, you won't have any carryover, because I, I think our projection is that it's going to be a little bit under that 700,000. And it has to go back into the capital improvement. So, therefore, you don't have any money to put towards transportation, or anything of that nature.
Buses and all that stuff.
Right. So, it has to go right back into CIP.
Well, quite honestly, I mean, the ideal way to do it is to have whatever amount you need in the budget each year to replace on a schedule that keeps you, every 15 years, turning buses, a bus over, right?
And I think that also includes some vehicles, because I know there, we were doing something with the county as far as, I, Aaron would have to explain that. But I know that, I think they're doing something different now, and so, put some replacement in for these, for some vehicles. But that's, that's why you see some of those increases there in, you know, the, and those are really the two biggest. When you look at technology and you look at transportation, that's, those are your two biggest jumps.
And those vehicles are, they transporters too.
So.
So. So, when the schools have a line for technology, they're not probably talking about replacing computers, or at least not on a big scale. They're talking about other types of technology that would be in their budget?
They probably, yes, they would be, and that may, they may even.
Smart boards.
Smart boards, the projectors, the bulbs forum, the different.
Do you know if like, a lot of the teachers use apps, you know, CSOL, Dojo, and those come with a fee? Is that something that's purchased countywide, or is that individually by school? Would that be under, if you don't remember this, there would be under technology?
So, a lot of times, there's, you will see that at the school level, if they're purchasing some of those things. You know, we were doing, what was the one we were paying for last year? And then, we didn't do it this year. It was one of those message.
Gotcha. So, that's basically what they choose to use as school base?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, I know like with instruction, you know, the big piece with instruction there, the, the big increase there is because looking at a division-wide screener, so making sure that everybody's using the same screener.
Reading, math.
Yes. And this, just, I mean, we need to look at both as far as for the screeners.
Is that this one?
Assistant superintendent, high end of the team.
And I know a lot falls under Buck's area.
Yeah.
Because his is usually the largest.
So, the big tickets with Buck is, of course, the child nutrition. And then, the janitorial.
Custodial.
Custodial, gotcha. Yeah, I mean, there's something in there.
Yeah, when you look at those two, those, those are each big-ticket items.
Gotcha. And those are both contracted services, so.
Now, the food service is not shown there, because we're looking sort of at the operating budget here. That's in a separate budget. But what is in, in this one is the custodial. And that's in excess of 2 million dollars there. So, that, that's the lion's share of his, his budget.
Okay.
You're right, because the child nutrition comes out of the child nutrition account.
Yeah.
It's a separate account. That's not in, yes, yes.
Yeah, his would be 5 or 6 million if it were included.
I gotcha. And then, do we?
The last page.
This is the last one?
Yeah. So, what I did was just, and this is a very, you know, this is the initial, very preliminary start to it. What I've put down here, and this will change, is the projected revenue that we looked at on the first sheet. The second number coming down there would be a subtraction from it, which is the step only for all employees, plus a 1% bonus, the cost of that, and the 10% increase in health insurance that's anticipated or budgeted for. Now, the next item I say is additional substitute cost approximation, and that's what it is. We're budgeting right now around 800,000 for substitutes.
933.
933, okay. So, depending on where we land, it really isn't going to make a big difference which way we land, but it's going to cost us about a million dollars.
It's going to be at least that. I mean, because you're, you're at 933, plus the 68,000 that we paid out to our teachers.
Yes.
So, you're over a million, right?
And they have underestimated there. And that's if we get an 80% fill rate, if.
Well, I mean, no, if we get an 80% fill rate, we're way above that.
Well, no, I mean, but we already got the 900,000 to put to it.
He's not saying a million total, he's saying a million more.
Yeah, a million more, in addition to the nine, nine, whatever it is we have.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so that number, we can definitely look at.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's just.
We're going to have to have, you know, some, some conversation on where we want to find a budget for that.
So, then, if we level funded all the non-labor, it would be the 10,988. But we know at this point, and it may be, end up being larger, that we have at least 3,247 in additional requests for next year.
Non-labor.
Non-labor. So, then, that means there's a gap of just over 6 million dollars. Now, this is very early on. Our hope is, and maybe even our expectation is, that what comes out of Richmond eventually may be better for us than what we've been given, but no guarantees, and that may or may not be the case.
And it's not super likely to be 6 million?
Well, I don't think it would be that. I mean, that would be great, but I don't think we've ever seen that much before.
And if you remember, last year, our non-labor cost from our cost centers was actually a lot higher than what we actually budgeted, because we had to go back and level fund them the year before. So, we actually reduced from what they were asking, and just level funded them last year. So, that means this would be level funding everybody again in this projection. And how long have they been level funded at the, at our cost centers?
Well, either level funded or reduced for a long time.
Meanwhile, there's been 14% inflation.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
In that span of time.
Yes, at least.
All right.
And we are looking at, I did ask them to, to run numbers to see what a 3% plus a step would look like for teachers and instructional assistants. Because if we're just giving a step, and then, other divisions are giving a percent raise, then, you know, we're going to start seeing a gap between starting salaries and salaries compared to our neighboring districts. And then, you're looking at competing issues and things of that nature, so.
Well, I think historically, that's what we've always struggled with. Not necessarily competing with Loudon, but if you're competing with Frederick, Shenandoah.
Yeah.
Manchester City, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, we're pretty close with everybody. But if, if somebody's going in and popping up there, you know, with an increase, then.
Yep.
We'll lose ground.
But at least, you know, the one thing, if out of this budget we can do anything, I want to make sure everybody gets a step.
Yeah, you continue to say that was your priority.
That is always the first thing. And I just, you know, to hold somebody for, you know, the same year, year after year, at the same step, is just, you know, not, not a good practice. And, of course, it doesn't help us retain individuals if they're frozen on a step. So.
All right, so we have a hub, we have a lot of work to look through here. Check a little bit of everything. So, we meet again tomorrow as the hearing, the official hearing, in case anybody wants to.
Give us any ideas.
Give us any suggestions, ideas. That's an opportunity of what their priorities would be. If you've made it really clear throughout our meetings, your first, your priority is making sure everybody has the step. I think we're all in agreement with that.
Yeah, and I asked the board, after our first meeting, I asked the board to let me know if they had any other priorities, and nobody said anything. So, I assume the board seems to be on board with that. With the, we said the step increase being the number one priority, and then, if possible, the health insurance was on that. So, nobody objected to that.
And there's things that, you know, we wanted to try to attack this year, such as the, you know, our coaching supplements have all, they've, they've been the same for a very long time. And if you look at our coaching supplement. And if you look at our coaching supplements, just rounding, um, to our neighbors, um, we are well below what other people are paying for our coaches, and, um, and so, you know, when, when you look at just a lot of different initiatives, um, you know, depending upon where the budget lands, it will depend upon if we can address those initiatives or not. As a school division, or if we're just pushing it off another year.
And I think one thing that's always been on the table that we always talk about is the communications position, whatever that would look like.
And that, you know, that's not in this budget.
Not included in these numbers in front of you.
Yeah, but much needed. Very much needed.
So, I mean, it's, yeah, sometimes you look at the first look and it's gloom and doom, but.
Yeah, but obviously, yeah.
You know, yeah, yeah, I mean, but it's just, yeah, well, we'll just need to look through it, continue to see what we can do and where we're at, and.
Is our next? Yeah, do you have a list of our meetings? 'Cause I felt like when we discussed that last week, I was confused about where we landed.
It was the first email I sent out.
Okay.
I can go print that email out and, um, provide you with the copy.
So our next?
I didn't bring that with me.
I, I think I have it updated on my calendar. I have our next meeting would actually be the, with the joint meeting on the twentieth, February twentieth.
February twentieth, so your, your email from January eighth?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we went back to that original calendar.
On February twentieth, is that a Tuesday?
Should be.
That's a Tuesday. That's on my calendar, too, okay.
So that's two weeks, so what are we potentially expecting to review at that meeting? The joint meeting?
I think, Rob, do you think we could have kind of a tentative, kind of, put together?
I mean, we'll obviously look at this and kind of give back, give back some feedback.
Yeah.
You know, on this, because we need to dig into that, there's a lot of papers there. And then on the twentieth, we could expect to.
Yeah, I don't have, I was just trying to think when crossover is, the date, and I forget. I don't know that we'll have a House and Senate budget at that point to, to look at, but. We do, of course, we'll, we'll have that for you, and, uh, we'll definitely have the, um, step plus three per, three percent for teachers and instructional assistants, um, and we'll, we'll solidify some of these other numbers, particularly on the revenue side, um, on the right-hand side there, the federal, and, uh, miscellaneous revenues, get those firmed up a little bit, and we'll have a good, good feel on the, the non-labor. We'll have that in more detail for you. At that point, we may have a renewal or an estimate on our, of the.
Which is, yes, we could have a, which would help us if it comes in lower than.
Oh, boy, that would be nice, that'd be real nice.
'Cause right now, Colton's studying the ten percent.
Ten percent, yeah.
And just hopefully help.
'Cause I think last year, we budgeted ten percent, it came in at, was it six or something?
I think, I think it's around six, yeah.
Came in at six, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
So, any other questions?
So in terms of the timeline, sorry, you may have been saying this, I was looking at the calendar, but in terms of the timeline, um, tonight, or tomorrow night, we'll hear anyone who wants to give input on the priorities, and then you take that information and what we've been talking about, and what we talked about on February twentieth, you'll create a draft of budget, and then is that getting presented to us all on, at our March meeting?
Um, so typically, yeah, we would want to have something at the March meeting for the board to kind of say, okay, this is tentatively where we're at.
Okay. So more likely than not, we'll have that in March, and then you said you don't remember exactly when the state is supposed to figure everything out, doesn't mean they will anyway, but we would be passing our budget, what, May? Is that what we usually do it?
Well, typically, you would.
So in March, you.
March. Do a proposed.
Proposed budget.
To the board, to the, to the Board of Supervisors, and then typically.
And that's the March twelfth?
Yes, and then typically, by the end of April, they would come back to us with a, uh, you know, their appropriation amount, what our budget actually is.
Okay.
With hope we could then get contracts out to employees early in May, the first week or so of May, or if it's the last week of April, that'd even be better, but, um, now, if the General Assembly doesn't conclude their budget work by the end of March, um, then, you know.
Last year.
Yeah.
I mean, last year, last year it went on until.
Well, really September, because they, they did approve a budget, but then they came back and.
They changed, yeah.
They changed it in September, so, yeah.
But I feel like we ended up.
Was it the year before? It was late in June, we were almost on the thirtieth of June.
I feel like, didn't we?
Yeah.
We had kind of an estimate.
Yeah, yeah, which makes it difficult.
Yeah. We're under required timelines, but we're at the mercy of, they're not.
Other, other, yeah.
Of the, yeah, government there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So if you guys can look through that and kind of see, you know, as, kind of let me and Rob know kind of what you're seeing is maybe some, some of the priorities that, that as, as members, um, then as we work through things, we can include those things to try to see, those are the things that, that, you know, what, what, what will be the final numbers as, as far as a proposed, so.
Okay. Works for me. I have any other questions?
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that last year's?
That's this year's.
I mean.
Yeah, I know, I know. If we do, of course, we'll, we'll have that for you, and, uh, we'll definitely have the, um, step plus three per, three percent for teachers and instructional assistants, um, and we'll, we'll solidify some of these other numbers, particularly on the revenue side, um, on the right-hand side there, the federal, and, uh, miscellaneous revenues, get those firmed up a little bit, and we'll have a good, good feel on the, the non-labor. We'll have that in more detail for you. At that point, we may have a renewal or an estimate on our health insurance.
Which is, yes, we could have a, which would help us if it comes in lower than.
Oh, boy, that would be nice, that'd be real nice.
'Cause right now, Colton's studying the ten percent.
Ten percent, yeah.
'Cause I think last year, we budgeted ten percent, it came in at, was it six or something?
When it's six, it was like six.
I think it's around six, yeah.
Came in at six, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
So, any other questions?
So in terms of the timeline, sorry, you may have been saying this, I was looking at the calendar, but in terms of the timeline, um, tonight, or tomorrow night, we'll hear anyone who wants to give input on the priorities, and then you take that information and what we've been talking about, and what we talked about on February twentieth, you'll create a draft of budget, and then is that getting presented to us all on, at our March meeting?
Um, so typically, yeah, we would want to have something at the March meeting for the board to kind of say, okay, this is tentatively where we're at.
Okay. So more likely than not, we'll have that in March, and then you said you don't remember exactly when the state is supposed to figure everything out, doesn't mean they will anyway, but we would be passing our budget, what, May? Is that what we usually do it?
Well, typically, you would.
So in March, you.
March. Do a proposed.
Proposed budget.
To the board, to the, to the Board of Supervisors, and then typically.
And that's the March twelfth?
Yes, and then typically, by the end of April, they would come back to us with a, uh, you know, their appropriation amount, what our budget actually is.
Okay.
With hope we could then get contracts out to employees early in May, the first week or so of May, or if it's the last week of April, that'd even be better, but, um, now, if the General Assembly doesn't conclude their budget work by the end of March, um, then, you know.
Last year.
Yeah.
I mean, last year, last year it went on until.
Well, really September, because they, they did approve a budget, but then they came back and.
They changed, yeah.
And changed it in September, so, yeah.
But I feel like we ended up.
Was it the year before? It was late in June, we were almost on the thirtieth of June.
I feel like, didn't we?
Yeah.
We had kind of an estimate.
Yeah, yeah, which makes it difficult.
Yeah. We're under required timelines, but we're at the mercy of, they're not.
Other, other, yeah.
Of the, yeah, government there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So if you guys can look through that and kind of see, you know, as, kind of let me and Rob know kind of what you're seeing is maybe some, some of the priorities that, that as, as members, um, then as we work through things, we can include those things to try to see, those are the things that, that, you know, what, what, what will be the final numbers as, as far as a proposed, so.
Okay. Works for me. I have any other questions?
Okay.
Well, thank you.